Okay, good evening. My name is Jack Dearborn. This is the WERS zoning board of adjustments. This is the January 3rd, 2017 meeting. This evening, we have only one case. And it's public hearing, case 0117. Philip Holmes, Woodland Drive, tax map 402-58, is requesting a variance to Article 28.9 to construct a driveway through a 25-foot wetland buffer in residential zone. Okay, before we start, members up here, I'd like them to introduce themselves, and they will also be the members to decide this case today.
Mark Moretti, member.
Steve Richman, member. Michael Meyer, alternate.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Thank you. Okay, before we start, there is a checklist that's been completed. There is a application form filled out. And there is five points of hardship for the variance. There is authority for Art Siciliano to do this, but he's not yet known it. There is a tax map showing 58. Anybody around here need to know where it is in the town? Does everybody at Butters knows where this is? Anybody on the board needs to know physically where this is? No? You all set where it is?
Yeah.
You know where it is on the town map?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a list of Butters. There is a D. Okay, there's a letter here and also a merit letters. Okay. With that, any... I'll tell you what, first thing I'm gonna do is explain how we run the meeting. The meeting has done the following. First, we will... The board will... I will ask the board if anybody wishes to put in motion to accept the application. What does this mean? It means we set the application to be heard. It's complete enough for us to do it. That's the intent. After that, assuming that we get three votes, we will go forward with any affirmative. After that, I'll ask the board if they have any questions before I ask the applicant to come forwards. And if none, then I'll ask the applicant to come forwards. And we'll ask again if there's any questions, being none, we'll move on. At that time, I'll ask the applicant to come forwards and present his presentation of his five points of hardship. The reason we'd like you to read into the record the five points of hardship. So, not only you know, we know, but also everybody else in the audience without a copy knows. And it's also a record of the meeting. After that, I'll ask the board if they have any follow-up questions, being none. I will ask the board, the applicant, to sit down. Then I'll ask if anybody in the room who are butting... Excuse me. Approving of Butters wish to speak to this motion, just so they can come forwards. Any disapproving of Butters, again, come forwards. Public allege other boards. After that, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut anything that may have been said. After that, I'll go around the room one more time. Approving of Butters, disapproving of Butters, public allege other boards. After that, I will shut down the public meeting, and then we will deliberate the case. So, with that said, can I get a motion to...
Move to accept the application.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? On both paper?
Aye.
opposed? None? Stentions? Come on. Five service. Okay. Any questions of the application before we hit... Okay, with that, come on forward. State your name, please.
My name is Tim Ferwarda. I'm the wetland scientist that have the wetlands on the lot. So, Hart's away for a couple of weeks, so I'm filling in for Hart.
Let's make sure of something.
I have a...
Are you the applicant? Are you the owner of the property?
No.
Okay, so where's your authority?
I have a letter from the owner.
Is that in here?
No, I... Well, I don't know.
Well, let's make sure because it says Art Siciliano can do it.
All right.
You ain't Art Siciliano. We know our pretty well.
Correct.
We accept no substitutes unless you have something saying that you're Art Siciliano or is designated.
Well, I have this.
See what this is?
Hopefully, that'll suffice.
Please consider this written authorization to allow my wetland scientist Timothy Ferwarda...
Ferwarda.
Ferwarda. To represent me on all the meaning concerning the variance application of the law, tax law 402 slash 58. Sign. Truly. And so, we'll take this in place of... We'll take that in place of... All right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, do you all know? It doesn't matter. We need the authority. Maybe interesting to know real quick. Thank you. With that said, could you go through the five points of hardship? If you want to take us through the map first, so we can...
Well, I have four copies of the plan here.
Why don't you give it to us? And if anybody wants a better view of this from the audience, welcome to come up and take a look at this while he describes the map. Because we don't want anybody to ask me five minutes, half an hour for meetings. I want to see the map. So, with that said, if you'd like to come up and take a better look, if you want to have a good idea of what's going on. Can you all see that? That's all I care about. Okay, thank you.
Just for a quick overview, I added some color to this print here just to make things a little more viewable. The green line is the edge of the wetlands, and the blue is the edge of the viral pool. And the orange is the 50-foot buffer to the wetlands. And there's variances for the... Actually, the driveway crossing the buffer.
So, just so we understand right now, how much encro... How much are you gonna be into? You got full 25 feet?
Yes.
Okay. So, in other words, you're not gonna be... You're no closer than zero, right? Because... Well, this is different.
The driveway is going through the buffer.
Okay, I get it now.
25 feet on both sides of the wetland there. I think the total's 2,360 square feet in the buffer.
Okay, but the... So, you're asking a variance and...
The variance is for the buffer encroachment.
Okay. The reason I ask this is a lot of times, people only go like one side encroaches onto the wetland. So, we say no closer than. So, that allows us... This is, you're literally going through the wetland.
We're going through the wetland and through the buffer.
Correct. I didn't make sure. Now, I understand.
The wetland goes from one side of the property to the other. There's no way around it to get access to the buildable portion.
So, actually, the 25-foot actually goes into the other lot. Am I correct? Where you don't connect it to a yellow?
Yes.
Okay. I get it now.
I mean, if you look a little bit closer, he's got some dots.
Well, I see them here.
Actual buffer encroachment. There's no encroachment, you know, here and here. It's just this part here.
Yeah. Just uniquely explain that a little bit.
Okay, well, what he's shown there is the edge of the driveway and the grading for the driveway. So, the limits of the grading are gonna be right here and right there. So, that's our buffer encroachment. Is that everything in the dots? He's got dots actually on the plan.
Well, show me on this map right here. Because I want to be able to reference some, either some language or a map. So, where on this map is your point of view saying? I understand that. But what do you...
Everything with these dots or the footprint of the driveway is gonna take...
Yeah, but you're gonna also be sloping the hair, aren't you?
Right.
Okay, so it's not only the dots, it's also the slope. The end of the slope, Mark? Is this?
This line right here. That's the limits.
So, how do I describe this?
I think you're gonna have to say as shown on this plan.
Well, I need to show... Show them what on the...
Well, it's everything that's in this area showing the dots.
Well, there's even a dot here, is there? Is there a dot here?
Yes.
Where's the dot? I don't see... You mean these dots in here?
Right.
Oh, okay. So...
Another way to look at it is this line, right?
Yeah, but how do I describe that line? I can't say line A. So, I want to be able to...
I think the easiest way to say it is...
Within the shaded area?
Within... Right. The driveway and the grading.
Within the shaded area?
Shaded area shown on this plan.
Now, do you folks all know what we're talking about up here? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay. Everybody okay on that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, got it.
All right.
Okay, so if you're all set, I can read through the five points?
You need to read through everything here because they may know what's in here. People at home can read this. So, we need to have this...
So, item number one, that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because this land is zoned residential as are those surrounding properties. The proposal is to construct a driveway through the wetland and the 25-foot wetland buffer for a residential home. Similar uses in the same neighborhood will not diminish values. Okay, item two of the variance request, it will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because the ordinance allows a wetland crossing for driveways. So, the spirit of the ordinance would and should allow for disturbance of the 25-foot wetland buffer for a driveway. Number three, that through the granting of relief by the variance, substantial justice will be done because the owner will be able to gain access to the buildable dry area of the land zoned for residential use. The four, that by granting the variance, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because this is disturbance of the 25-foot wetland buffer for a private driveway. The disturbance will take place away from the public highway, and the public will not be using the private driveway. So, number five, I guess, has a couple of different questions on it.
Yeah. Do A...
And A is, please describe the special conditions of your property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The wetland and the wetland buffer bisect the property from side to side. In order to get to the dry buildable land in the rear of the lot, that special condition must be crossed. And then there's, I guess, two more parts.
Yeah.
Please indicate how owing to special conditions identified above, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the special... and the specific application of that provision to the property. The general purpose of this ordinance provision is to protect all wetland areas regardless where they are in town. Application of that provision to this law would deny residential use of the law. Provision is there to protect, not deny use. And two is how the proposed use is reasonable one. The owner will be able to gain access to the buildable dry area of the land zoned for residential use. And I think there's a part B which he says here. Just see part A on the third page. So, does the board have any further questions?
Yeah, right off the top here. Please indicate how owing to the special exception identified above, that paragraph down below.
Yeah, like... Okay. What it says here is application of the ordinance provisions to this law would not allow access to the usable area of the lot. The lot is zoned for residential use. In order to reasonably use the lot, a variance is needed to construct a driveway to a home on the buildable dry area of the lot.
Let me just ask you this one question. Is this design you have before us the least impact you could have?
Yes, it is.
It appears to be. I just want to make sure.
As you can see, the wetlands pretty much go from... It actually goes over the lot here. So, this gives us the least impacting way of crossing the wetland that is possible there.
Can I go a little further?
Other than if you built a bridge over it.
I had that same question, but I'm curious to know what the state regulations are. You're gonna meet all of the state regulations that might apply in this situation.
Yes, we have to apply to the state for a wetland permit to cross the wetland after we get through this process. And they're gonna ask the same question. What is the least impacting way to access this?
Right.
Have you received your wetland permit yet?
Not yet. I think we have a meeting with the conservation commission next week.
Okay. Any questions before I ask the applicant to sit down? So, none? Please, please. Any approving of Butters wish to speak on this? Okay, none? Any disapproving of Butters wish to speak on this? State your name, please. What do you got up here?
My name is Keith Tebow. Living the lot across from this one. Directly abiding.
Under this map right here. Oh, point to this.
I got the big map, yeah. My name's... Directly across the...
Yeah. And downstream.
To address my concerns, my immediate concerns for my property, this piece of land sits uphill for me. I've been out there for 20 years. Last year was the first year we seen this pond, actually, this viral pool actually dry. In years past, there's been several feet of water there. Almost a gallon of water. There seems to be a direct relationship between the amount of water in that pond and how well my well does in the summertime. Without being a hydrologist myself, I can't directly say...
Do you have a service well or a drill?
I have a drill well. So, it still can filter down through the bedrock that's out there. There are large fissures in the bedrock, et cetera, et cetera. The whole area is filled with pools which I'm sure drain into the aquifer that's down there. In addition to that, because it is uphill and the proposed slope of this driveway will dump directly into the circle out there. This is a dirt road. As it is now, every rainstorm we get, I get half of the town's road in my driveway. So, there's been nothing to address the additional water that's gonna be put into the street for this.
Wait a minute, let me just make sure.
Yep.
You're not changing the depth of this pool. You're not really changing...
You are changing... You're changing what will drain into it.
Well, are we changing the height of the drain?
Yes.
Coming out of that pool? Is the bottom of the culvert lower than the existing ground around that pool?
No, I don't think so. The culvert is pitched into the pool.
No, my question is, he's worried about more running... More water running off that drop in on the hill.
You're gonna increase the flow.
Currently, right now, there is a ditch here, which is why they need to do this fill.
So, the question is, is the bottom of the ditch currently the bottom of the culvert that you propose? If so, there's no more water. If it's the same.
Water will be running down that driveway like a sluice.
Wait a minute, let's just find out. Because what exists, exists now. Somebody did that ditch.
Now, this... The low point is here. This slopes this way.
Okay, so how does the water get onto the road? I just want to... This is a clear...
How does the water get onto the road now or as exist or with the modifications? With the modifications, I believe this proposed section of driveway will be four feet above grade here.
But does that affect the flowage out of that pond?
The pond doesn't have an out... It's a self-contained. Now, I imagine that if there gets to be enough water in there, it has to go somewhere.
But it happens now already.
In the springtime, it does. It flows down along this little point.
So, what's different if the bottom of the culvert is exactly the same height of the bottom of the ditch?
The driveway... But the driveway will not be. Water will take the path of least resistance, correct? That driveway will be the path of least resistance.
Which is over the culvert?
Which is over the culvert.
Okay. So, where is the water going? Either the ditch or the culvert if it's at the same height, irrespective of where?
If you have a plate like this, okay? You've got sloped sides. You pour water down the center. Where's that water gonna go?
This is the point. You suggesting it's gonna go down the elevated driveway?
I'm accepting... I'm telling you, well.
You're suggesting that the driveway is gonna be a conduit of its own and create a larger flow?
Yes.
Is the driveway gonna be crowned? Is it gonna be pitched?
Wait a minute, I'm having a... I understand what you're saying, but I don't...
I... Yeah, I don't quite get it.
In practicality, how much of a slope is on that driveway coming off the culversack going to the other side of the drop?
The driveway goes uphill from the culversack. 94, so that'd be six feet to the edge of the drain or to the edge of the fill? So, it'd be six feet in elevation to here to the edge of the driveway. My driveway is again another probably four by two of that.
Okay, just so we get it straight.
Yep.
You believe... So, you don't think that this driveway is gonna be crowned up over like this and down like that?
Not according to plans that were presented. It's flat on top.
Is that... It may be flat this way, but does it... Is it all flat going down here? The answer is no, it's downhill, isn't it?
It's all downhill.
Okay. But here, is this downhill to here?
So, you look at your elevation line. You have 300 feet elevation.
Yeah, I know, but this is lower. But this can't be correct if this is what you say it is because there's a slope on this and there's no slope.
You have no way of knowing that.
Well, come here. We need to understand this because the assumption on this gentleman's part is that, for some reason, which this should be higher than the adjacent ground, all the water from here should be going down here. Doesn't appear to be the case. You show this being flat from here. Is this actually a slope going down here like this?
Well, there should be a crown.
And when I'm talking about a crown, this is the pipe, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
The pipe's here. So, is this flat right across here going across like this? You show it as flat.
Well, this is looking at it this way.
Yeah, I understand. This should be a slope going downhill.
What's the elevation variables in the driveway itself? Where it crosses the wetlands and it crosses the buffer zone? What are the elevation variables?
294 is this right here. And this driveway's gonna be at 297.5. So, at this point here, it's three and a half feet above the wetland. So, this is a fill in here. Okay, this is 296. This one is 298. So, we're coming uphill.
I understand that. You're making his point because the water goes... He's seeing the water goes down this path.
Well, there's a low point right here. All right, he's 298 here, but he's 297.5 here.
You're seeing the bottom. Are you seeing it's gonna go like this? The road will go like this on the top surface?
I think there's a... He's got it drawn, so there's a dip in it right here. From here to here is downhill. From here to here is downhill. And the culvert, this is the inward in. This is the inward out. So, this flows into here.
What I see is 297. That's a low point. And the other side, or toward the middle, you got the 296 line, which is all lower than the 298. So, I don't understand why that's not gonna drain into the pond as opposed to down the driveway.
This is going... This is up.
That's a low spot.
You're showing 298 right here.
Yeah, at the far...
This is a high point right here.
Right, that's the high point. So, the driveway... Where the culvert is, is the low point of the driveway.
Yes, this is a low point. And then it goes uphill. So, and everything is draining into the pool over here. Correct. So, nothing's coming down this way.
Other than this little piece of...
Two feet lower on one side and half a foot lower on the other side.
Okay. I think we understand it now. Good point. I just didn't understand it. Okay, do you have any other?
So, I do have other questions. I want to ask, has there been a conservation survey done of this area for wildlife?
No.
I've lived there for 20 years.
That'll be a conservation commission issue.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's... Well, it has to do with the wetlands because these are wildlife that are supported by the wetlands.
Again.
So, if you're impacting the wetlands, you will impact the wildlife.
Again, that's a conservation question.
So...
Another question?
So, how about runoff? Is there anything to address runoff from property?
Surely, runoff is because I thought we just...
Well, I'm talking about uphill from the building lot.
What do you mean, here?
Here. So, you know, somebody puts an inlet, so you're gonna... They're gonna have... How are we gonna protect that viral pool from pollution generated by households?
Well, first of all, the only thing he's asked... He's not asking permission to buy a house here. He's asking for permission to establish this driveway for a house. We're not dealing with the house. We're dealing with how to get across this little bitty wetland, 3,000 square feet or thereabouts. We're not talking about this. We're not talking about this, so if you have a question pertaining to this, this is why we're having a conversation this evening.
Can I give you an informal to that one?
Sure.
That's exactly why the, the wetland buffer exists, and that's, that's the purpose of the wetland's buffer, so it shouldn't really be, um, a problem.
Unless you're pushing driveway through that culvert.
Well, that's why we-
That's a different argument, huh?
So the, the other point that I just wanted to address, um, one of the items that's in, in the statute and was addressed in the hardship was that, um, finding no other route.
Where's the other route?
Uh, well, at the time, Mr. Holmes has owned both properties. He had an opportunity that if he knew he was going to sell this land, he knew there was wetlands that were going to be approached upon, he could apply for, applied for a variance to do a backlot off from the existing driveway and deed it into the property. That would have been the path of least resistance and the best possible route.
Again, this was subdivided. They are pretty simple individual lots. They're not contingent on each other. So if you were standing here when this subdivision was made with a planning board, I don't know how many years ago, 30, 40 years ago, that may have been an interesting point, but today they're individual lots, and he's only asking for the ability to cross this wetland, which we, we do have a variance for that purpose.
And there are stipulations within the variance for feasibility and impact.
The reason we're very precise about understanding exactly what this design is because when we grant this, we will grant it no more than what's shown on this, this on, designer. That's why we're very particular to understanding exactly what we're going to give the variance for. The only variance is for this shaded area in this sort of a polygon, sort of a rough octagon, uh, that's all he's going to be able to disturb. That's it. Any more than that, he violates the variance. So that's why we're trying to be very precise exactly what he's asking for, and that's why I took the time to ask those questions rather than just, and make sure that you folks understand that as well, what's being asked.
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, any other dis- disapproving of others wish to speak? Your name, sir?
My name's Kevin Matthews.
And where are you relative to?
Uh, we are in a lot next door.
Want you to point to it, please, sir.
What's the number of that lot?
Uh, so this is our lot right here.
Okay, so you're 29, 59?
Yes.
Ashford?
I'm Ashford.
It's 48 with the guy, Michelle Ashford.
Right at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, you're right, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, our main concerns are, our well is right over here.
Your well is 141? It says, Butterwell is 140 feet, so you're over here somewhere.
Okay, so the well's over here. We're more concerned about all the water flow that's going to divert off of this side into our lot, because this is our yard right here, and our house sits right here. And then, and then it goes downhill this way, so things are going to flow through our lot.
Yeah, but I think, I think we pointed out you aren't here. That the only slope they're creating here is this little piece right here from the road.
It's just the mouth of my driveway.
Which is what?
Just about the, like, along, which should have-
Where's your driveway?
Actually, it should be right here.
Okay. I mean, that's all he's, so he's basically, how high of this burn be roughly? Two feet from the bottom of the culvert? I don't know which side of the road you're sloping this from.
Well, it's right here, it's three and a half feet.
Want you to come over here, maybe, what do you see from me to see that? So you show this slope, is this flat even though it's, I understand what that is, the bottom of the culvert, existing grade?
Yep.
So you're going up basically two feet to the top of this, so from here to here is about a two foot?
On that side, yeah, it's about, well, closer to three. 294 and a half to 297 and a half, 32.
Okay, so we're looking from this side, but this looks from this side and not from that side?
I'm not sure which side, but it doesn't really make much difference. But this is elevation 294, mostly here.
The water goes downwards.
And this is 296. Well, right here, it's, it's about a three foot fill, maybe three and a half on that side.
But from this slope to here?
Everything, everything is focused to go into the pool.
Right, he's asking the question, this is a slope here, correct, towards this direction? This side? This very side of the lot?
Yeah, yeah, it goes downhill from here to here.
So it's three feet and roughly 15 feet.
Right, but the culvert is sloped.
I understand, but he's worried about the water coming this way off this shoulder.
Every time it rains, it's going to drain right down into my lip.
Well, the way they've drawn it, it's going to go into this culvert and over here.
Okay, because this has got this little V right here?
All right, this is 296, and then there's 298. So it's actually sloping, the ground is sloping that.
Slope straight to the culvert.
You know, it, it's possible that, you know, when we get a big enough rainstorm, it fills up enough.
Last asked a question, the same problem happens whether it fills up or if it's, or before or after?
There is no outlet.
Right.
This whole, this thing is a depression, everything slopes into that. But if it gets deep enough, it's got to go out somewhere.
But even if it rained today, like, bro, yeah, where would it go out if it rained? If it overflowed today?
I don't think we're getting a rain today or it would overflow.
Hypothetically, if it rained 10 inches.
But I think it would go this way. These other lots are high.
Without the driveway. That's what I'm doing. So, I just want to make a point that this, this curve right here is roughly 10, uh, three feet higher than this, and this is roughly a 15-foot linear, so you've got about three to one slope. So that's all you're looking for, but then he says, all this water goes back and through the culvert.
Unless it rains a lot, it's going to-
Well, it doesn't matter if it rains a lot now. It has no different effect, because right now, you'd have the same effect, because this right here is no higher than it is right now. Same height, although-
The other concern I have is when these measurements are done, we're in the middle of a drought season, so they don't even actually know.
We need to have people hear this, if, go up to the, uh, mic, please.
When they drew these plans and they did their measurements, we've been in a drought, so-
Measurements of what? Geographic?
Yes, where the wetlands are. So there could be more water coming in there that we don't know about yet.
I don't want to speak as an expert for wetlands, but they come in and look at this by virtue of the soils, not, not the virtue of the wet on the pond, it's the high water and all that, so to speak. So it isn't where the actual physical water is, it's where the soils show that this is. The soils don't change through the year. They don't go out and measure it on a wet day or a dry day.
Okay.
They take a look at the soils, and they look at the slopes, and they analyze that, that's what this gentleman's specialty is, they go figure out what type of soil this is. I mean, it's a good point, but I'm not sure how much weight there is on it.
What about, like, runoff for chemicals on the driveway? So if they're going to put the driveway through the wetlands, what about chemicals on your driveway when you're treating your driveway, your oils, your gas, things like that, that are going to run off the driveway and into the wetlands? That's going to be roasting.
They're sticking their hands, they'll throw salt and all various contaminants.
But not, not next door when it's on my well, it's 140 feet away. That's fine, that's my concern.
All kinds of swamps right next to it. I'm not here to restrict anything from that area. Are you recommending we should restrict something which we don't know about right now?
Oh, I think it's potential for hazards if they have a driveway there that's, and it's going to, you don't think they're going to be treating driveways where there is oil and gases that leak off of vehicles and it's going to run.
You recommend your well, your well is 140 feet from here.
And the wetlands that are there also, and we do have wildlife out there, we have a lot of wildlife out there, and I don't want harm to them either.
I don't know. We'll see how it goes. Do you have anything else you wish to speak on?
Well, he did have the opportunity to sell me the property as well when I bought the house, and he didn't want to subdivide the lot, and to sell it to me at that time, but that's neither here nor there.
Civil matter. All righty. Does the board understand all the questions? Would you like to rebuttal, you think that's been said? Oh, excuse me, two things, ah, other boards being none, public and large being none. Wish to speak?
I think the only thing I can add is I do have the original subdivision plan with me, if you'd like to see it. It was done in 1974, and I doubt that they really looked at that wetland when they made that lot. It doesn't show on the, on the subdivision plans. So I don't, I don't think they made any provisions for it when they subdivided it. I'm pretty sure they weren't, because I was-
That was all prior to zoning anyways.
Well, it was certainly prior to the wetland buffer.
Absolutely. I think it needs eight is where the wetland buffer went down. Before that, if all you had was two acres and 200 feet, you got a subdivision.
Right.
That's what it was back then.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other approving of others wish to speak? Disapproving of others wish to speak again? Public and large, other boards? This time at 8:09, I want to shut down the public meeting. At this point, uh, I'd ask for motion for number one.
You do accept number one.
One and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, before we, before we do, I just want to make a point back. We have to vote on each one of these five points separately. Some other cases we can do, some other types of applications, we can do all of these at once. This one we have to do individually, five votes. So the first one is, we've got a motion and second and no discussion, a vote in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, 5-0-0. Uh, motion for number two, please?
Move to accept number two.
Second it.
Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, number three, please?
Move to accept number three.
Second it.
Discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An abstention, it's 5-0-0.
Move to accept number four.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being none? Abstention being, 5-0-0. And you got to do it all in one.
Uh, move to accept five minutes entirely.
Second it.
Thank you. Any dis- any discussion being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An abstention, 5-0-0. Okay, uh, the applicant gets the, that's it. Okay, we have some more business?
Minutes.
Should we do that with our friend not here?
No, you should probably wait until she comes back.
Now, we have an extension requested?
Um, yeah, you have two. Actually, we had voted on them, um-
Yeah.
By consensus.
Yes, we did it by, um-
Email.
Which one was that?
Both of them.
You did both of them, right?
Yeah.
So you have the vote?
Uh, it was all with favor.
Yeah, okay. I think I sent you an email on it.
Yes.
Okay. So we will record the vote, uh, being in the affirmative to extend both these, uh, is it Bullman and Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to extend both these applications? I'm both these, uh, variances.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?